And record tonight's hearing. In case anybody has any objections, they can leave the hearing at this time. They will be recorded. Again, today is November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, it's five o'clock P M. And this is in the hot zoning board of appeals. And first thing I'm going to do is to call this meeting to order, which I am doing right now. And the second thing is, I'd like to introduce the board members. We have David Walsh here, and we have Peter Barber, Max Casper, and David McColl, and myself, Jocelyn Campbell. And so the next thing we have to do is discuss or explain to you that we have to read the notice for tonight's meeting into the record. And I would like to also read a short blurb about the governor's order concerning remote technology for tonight's meeting. Essentially, the public hearing is being held tonight via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of persons that may gather in one place. Therefore, this meeting of the Nahat zoning board of appeals to be conducted via remote participation. And that's what we're doing tonight. And so we have posted the meeting notice and we have published it in the item, the lead item, on November third and November tenth. Tonight, we have before us a petition filed by Brett Henry as the property located at one forty-three dash one thirty forty-five in the hot road in the hot mass owned by Stephen Viviano for a special permit. The ad further reads, "The building inspector has denied a building permit. State that the closed restaurant best order food establishment requires a special permit use according to section four point one three of the zoning bylaws of the town of the heart able of use regulations." So the next thing I had need to read into the record quickly is a letter we received from the the hot planning board in November ninth, two thousand and twenty, addressed to myself as chair of zoning board regarding one forty-three in the hot road application for special permit to install takeout window. DMS Campbell's letter shares the planning board's comments in the above captioned special permit denial. I don't know why there's been no denial. I don't know why that's why. Which is on appeals, the zoning board of appeals and set for a hearing next week. Oh, I see. He was referring to the building inspector's denial. "We are very sympathetic as to the needs of the business in the heart to deal with the challenges of COVID nineteen and to keep the businesses operating. However, given the planning board's responsibilities over zoning rules, we have comments on several aspects detailed below. One, the filing is incomplete. The applicant has not provided a certified plot plan for one forty-three in the hot road. The plan submitted by the applicant is a plan for subdivision of one forty-one in the hot road and gives no square footage or information for the commercial building located at one forty-three of the one forty-three, one forty-five lot. The plans are over twenty years old. The architectural plans submitted by the applicant are not architectural plans. We have computer generated sketch and do not contain the information designing square footage for the commercial building. Without accurate information as to square footage is unclear whether the application belongs to for the Z B A or the planning board. As we indicated, insufficient applications can be returned to the applicant rather than acted upon. Two, the filing was signed by a director of butter, Mr. Wilson, in the capacity as building inspector and included no disclosure to that effect by Mr. Wilson. This raises concerns pertaining conflict of interest law. Three, the documents provided in this filing are duplicative to Mr. Henry's January filing, which parking became a concern but was never addressed. The approved use of one forty-three building requires sufficient off-street parking for staff and delivery vehicles. Yet there isn't enough space on the one forty-three, one forty-five lot to accommodate parking for both one forty-three and one forty-five as currently permitted. More recently, Mr. Henry's use of one forty-three in the hot road as a takeout retail food establishment required additional parking for customer orders and pickup. This already has had a significant impact on traffic and parking in the Irish Town neighborhood. Mr. Henry's permit application provided no information about parking to accommodate the employees or customers. Four, should a catering business be allowed to have a takeout window? Question mark. The zoning laws do not define catering businesses, but do discuss drive-up windows and best order food service establishments. Takeout window is not an accessory use for catering company. It appears the Nahat zoning bylaws indicate this sort of businesses being answered throughout the heart. And the broader issue apart from Mr. Henry's specific application, we feel the Z B A should address that question. You're not taking a position at this time as to whether or not the Z B A should approve a takeout window under the X TAN sticker. This actually is in the hot planning board, Calvin B. Hastings, Chair. So that being said, a couple of point things I just want to make point out real quickly. One of them is that as far as the filing being incomplete, the boards can discuss it if they like, but the rules for these zoning board do not require a certified plot plan for a use application. What do we require an architectural plan? We require a plan to show us the square footage. Further, he goes on to say, this letter, I'd love to say, from Mr. Hastings that regarding this building inspector's conflict of interest, that's really something personal to Mr. Wilson. I don't really have any concern over that, especially where Mr. Wilson is the one who denied him the permit. And three, as far as parking being addressed, we did address parking in the application regarding the catering. So that's not exactly accurate. But anyway, if anybody wants to address that, we can during the hearing. At this point in time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the petition to present their case. And I should tell everyone ahead of time that I asked Kim Campbell once I received that letter to make sure that Mr. Henry was aware of it, give him a copy, and ask him to please provide to us an updated plan with square footage of his space and as well as information about parking. Mr. Henry, would you like to have a go?
Sure. So from what I thought, when I actually met with you guys several months ago, I did give a plot plan, and you guys should have the square footage already on file. If I'm paying taxes on the property, you should know what the square footage is on the property. I'd be happy to provide it again, but I feel like I'm doing it two or three times in a row because we already discussed parking at the first meeting. The four parking spaces behind the lot that Mr. Viviano owns at one forty-five Nahat Road, so my myself and my employees.
To be complete for this particular application. We're not gonna, this has to be a complete and separate application. This is not, nothing to do with the other application that you filed. You need to file, give us a plan that shows the square footage. If you can, you can talk about it during the hearing, but if you don't have one, we can talk about how you can get one.
Okay.
It's gone. It's not up to us to go hunting those things down. You need to put the information to us, okay?
Okay.
All right, go on.
All right. I'm sorry. So what's the next question? I'm running out of time here.
Why don't you present your case?
So my case is, I opened the facility as a, with a catering permit to open for catering. And with the whole pandemic, we lost all that business as far as weddings and, you know, pretty much everything. We lost eighteen weddings this year. We lost most of our business. There's no catering, as you know. There's no gatherings. There's no baby showers. There's no bridal showers. There's no, pretty much any catering event, you know, is canceled. If you look at any place, all the restaurants are going out of business. And so we have a takeout window on the side. We're selling food out the window. We're putting specials out there. People coming up and picking up the side window, which was an existing window that's always been there. We didn't install that window. And that's pretty much it. I mean, I'd like to be able to sell food out the window. And that's what I've been doing. It's not, it's not a fast food establishment. People are calling orders in, and they're pre-ordering stuff, and they're picking up at the window. We're trying to comply with all COVID laws, so they're not coming in the building. I could have them come in the building and pick it up if I wanted to. We're trying to avoid that.
Okay. So what, at this point in time, if that is your petition, do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Henry?
A couple of issues. Let me just so. So this, you have a catering establishment which is allowed for a special permit under the zoning bylaws in a B one zone?
Yes.
Okay, now. So the way I see this is you have a consumer service establishment. And under a consumer service establishment under the B one zoning, then we have, we have the ability to grant a special permit for for a, you know, not just catering, but for the selling of food. Now, you know, there are a couple of issues came up about parking for, you know, for customers. There are two other establishments down on that same area. Well, one that's been there for many, many years, the, I call it captains. I don't even know what it's called now, but it's been there for twenty some odd years. That place has not ever had parking for customers. When we had the fish store, also, once again, we never required parking for customers. It was always on street parking because people are not there for any period of time other than to stop.
May I ask you to hold off on that for a second? That thought for a second? I want, I do think we need to talk about those issues in terms of, and have a deliberation. But at first, I want to get, give, pass the section where we have to ask everybody, do you have any questions for Mr. Henry? And then we can talk about.
Oh, I see. All right. Sorry to drop the gun.
We need to do that too, but do anyone have any questions on the board?
Yeah, so Mr. So Mr. Henry, how many parking spaces are associated with your establishment?
We have up to four parking spaces for our employees behind the building.
Okay.
And then customers would use on-street parking for pickup. So we don't have any employees that park on-street at all.
Okay. And your intent to obviously sell food out of a window, that was not your intent when you opened. You came to us for a, I think the change of use was to open a catering company.
Correct.
And you're only doing, you know, you're doing catering. I mean, you're doing.
Well, it wasn't my original plan to do this, you know, to work seven days a week. And, you know, I feel like I'm providing a service for the town right now during the COVID. I wasn't planning on working seven days a week and doing this out the window. It definitely was not my plan. And, you know, I'm doing it now to make ends meet. I invested a lot of money into the building here on the property. And, you know, I need to pay my bills and make my money back on what I did and go from there.
Okay.
Otherwise, I can just lock the doors and call it a day. I get a pretty big investment here. And as I said, when things were going well, the, you know, we had eighteen weddings that canceled this year and.
And Dave McColl, did you have a question? You thought you were gonna ask a question?
Yeah, I have a question on Mr. Henry. So is there a way to just alert people in advance when they place their order, you know, to try to stick to the time that you give them fifteen minutes, thirty minutes? Is there a way to alert the customers so they know, show up and all show up at ones and waiting around just to move the traffic along?
I mean, I don't feel like there's been any traffic backups up front. When somebody calls, we'll tell them. Give them a pretty accurate time, fifteen minutes, ten minutes, twenty minutes based upon how busy it is or how busy it is in, you know, five minutes. And I haven't seen any real traffic backup at all up front from my end. You know, people come, they're at the window for thirty seconds. Most people prepay over the phone. And so when they come, they just go to the window literally and pick it up and off they go.
So how do people order? How do they know about what's on your menu? Does that all done online?
It's online, yeah. Facebook and, mostly on Facebook and.
So it's possible for you to just to put out a communication on Facebook or your menu saying, you know, pick up, pick up the, you know, pick up at the actual time, just to let the people know not to come and, you know, hang around for an extended period of time. Maybe there's a way you can just put something, quick blurb on your website.
Sure.
I mean, I think that would be reasonable to just let people know, you know, we just want to move along the traffic. So there's really no need for parking, just very brief, just like you're going to Seaside Variety or any of those other places. I mean, I've never noticed anyone hanging around. Those places are always in and out. And everything moves, you know, I've never seen any issues down in those places, even in the summer. So I don't, that's, that's the way I look at it. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's okay there. I don't think there's any parking issue.
I don't think it's a traffic issue or a parking issue. There hasn't been, that I'm aware of anyways, so.
Yeah, I don't believe there is. And I've seen a lot of the activity at those places in the peak of summer. And anyway, that's, you know, I think people just can be alerted to, you know, come at your scheduled time to pick up. That's all I would have to add.
Okay, I have a question for you, Mr. Henry.
Sure.
Is it possible, because I know you said you have the four spaces, three to four spaces in the back of the building, and that you have less than a thousand square feet. And the reason we ask for this information is because if you have more than a thousand square feet of, you know, space and expectations. And again, I remember last time that your plan was missing that information, but somebody provided information at the hearing. If you could just get a plan together, whether it be, doesn't have to be an architectural plan, even the plan you have, and get the square footage on there, just give it to Kim Campbell, that would be helpful. As well as a plan for your company, a sketch or something that would show us where your parking is for your employees, so that we know, we know that. And we have a complete application. That would be helpful.
Okay, great. Excuse me.
Do you understand that your representation is how many square footage inside your building?
I'm sorry?
What is the least square footage that you have, that's your least area?
It's eight hundred square feet.
Eight hundred square feet, okay. Because we have to show that we have jurisdiction over the matter in order to proceed.
Right.
Okay, so you presented your case. You've asked you some questions. Do any other members have any questions for Mr. Henry?
No, no.
Now we're gonna move to another area, and as we're gonna ask if anyone else here would like to speak either in favor or again, but before we do that, there's something else I need to explain. And that is that I received an email today from Diane Dunphy that the, when she clicked on the notice for this hearing, that it was, she got an error message. And I also got an email last Friday from Michelle Capano, whom I don't know, but I replied to her. She asked me for a copy of the hearing notice, or she asked Diane for it and copied me. Apparently, she was getting an error notice, and I didn't think much of it. But when I saw Diane's email today, the town clerk, I contacted town council, who just emailed me while everybody was talking, and said that he feels as though we should continue this hearing once because of the fact that notice may have been defective that was posted, just to be on the safe side. And so we're going to have to do that, I believe. But I think we can take this as far as we can. And then before we make any decision, we'll get a date from everybody, hopefully in the next week, and we'll post the notice for another hearing, and we'll finish up on that night.
So Jocelyn, can you explain a little bit more about the error message? I don't, I'm not understanding.
Hey, when Diane Dunphy, and apparently last Friday or the day, whatever day Ms. Capano went there as well, when they clicked on the meeting notice, they got an error message.
Okay. Because I clicked on it just before the meeting so that I could get the information to get on the meeting.
Right. Well, apparently, at some point in time, it was defective, the notice. So what Dan Script wrote me an email while we were talking, and he said he thought we should continue our hearing.
And let me ask a question that what is, what is the reason that Mr. Script is giving for continuing it?
Because he said that the notice must be within forty-eight hours of the meeting date. And we don't know for sure when the defect happened and when it was cured. And so.
But do we know if it was a, I mean, that's two people. Was it a defect in possibly their computer systems versus?
Actually, he said that we got a, it was not their computer system, so Michelle Capano just emailed us, texted me. No, we understand that. It seems to be that it was a problem from the webmaster. He wrote and responded and said that he had a problem changing hostings or something like that. I'm not the person, so I don't know. Anyway, so it's very simple. All we have to do is we can take this as far as we want. We just won't close it out completely. And then we can, so we can continue tonight. We can post it. I would suggest that we go to, you know, within a week. And that way, yeah, we don't have to re-advertise that. The date, the date hearing, if everybody can give me a date in time, that'll be good for them.
Jocelyn, can we do it right before the next hearing?
I'm sorry?
Can we do it like immediately with the next petition that we have?
And that is scheduled for?
That's, that's scheduled too far away, I think.
It's not far away.
It would be too far away if he agrees to continue it. With urgency, the place is open, isn't it?
Max, what'd you say? I couldn't hear you.
I said if he agrees to continue it, what is the, what is the timeline matter?
That would be fine, but if we want to do it earlier, then we would have to pick a date this sooner.
Okay.
It would give anybody an opportunity to speak, who hasn't had an opportunity to speak at that time. So what do you want to do, guys? Do you want to have a date?
My preference would be to just do it, you know, immediately before the Willow Road hearing in December. Like I said, the place is already there, so it's not like anyone's waiting on anything, right?
All right. Are we saying then that we put it off for a month, but at the same time, we're we're allowing what we're supposed to be voting on to continue? I don't think that makes sense.
Anything. It's already there.
Well, yeah, but we have to, we have to okay it. Yeah, but we have to okay it.
Yeah. I mean, a guy's trying to save his business and, you know, a delay could, you know.
How are we delaying it? It's already, isn't it open today?
Yep.
Yes.
So just keep it as is, and we just hear it then.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, I agree with you, Jocelyn. We should continue with the hearing as far as we could go. We could even, you know, have a little bit of deliberation time. And then, you know, we would just open the, open it, maybe review, see if there's any additional comments, and then vote on it.
Yeah, I think the public comments, the public comment is the only thing that could be argued that, you know, someone didn't have an opportunity to be heard or whatever the case may be. So yeah, I agree with you, Peter. We just move it forward, get it right to the very end, and then address it, any public comments, and we can vote dead next time, whenever it may be.
Right, we won't close the hearing tonight. We'll schedule it in future time.
Okay, can I make a comment?
I would like Mr. Henry to respond, only because I want to see what he, how he feels.
So my thing is, I was, I was on a planning board meeting for three and a half hours the other night, and the planning board was going back and forth, arguing about. Discussing a letter that I wasn't allowed to even see, and they're complaining that the planning board doesn't know what the zoning, they're not communicating well enough. And honestly, that's not my problem. So the planning board was saying, oh, the zoning board doesn't know what we're doing. We have a lack of communication. I listened after three and a half hours and get nothing accomplished on Monday night. Okay, now I'm sitting here again, so I gotta walk on eggshells for another month knowing and let my employees know. Am I gonna be open next month? Are you guys gonna shut me down after a month, another month? I don't think it's really fair to keep posting, putting this off for another month or so. I think it should be discussed and determined tonight, yea or nay, or whatever you want to do. I don't think it's fair to, you know. I have people answer, I paid lawyers. I have lawyers involved with this whole thing right now, and I'm paying, I'm paying people for another month now. I don't think it's fair to me wasting my time and effort on this, to be honest with you.
Mr. Henry, okay, you're, can I just respond a little bit to that? And that is that, you know, certainly, we can continue forward if you like tonight. But let me tell you that if somebody, it would be in your, to help you, the reason we would continue it. We haven't decided yet whether we're gonna continue it one week or whether we're gonna continue it till December. We're discussing that now. And on the advice of council, we are going to continue it for a period of time. Well, that was the plan. If you tell us that you don't care if somebody objects, the thing is, if somebody appeals a decision we make and the, and the meeting notice was deemed to be defective, then you would automatically lose. So we're trying to help you.
Using.
If we can get another date, maybe, maybe we don't have to go a whole month. Maybe everybody can.
No, I would.
It's not gonna take very long. It'll take us ten minutes.
All right, Jocelyn, and that was, that was kind of my point earlier. I think I'd like to move that we continue the hearing until next week, next Tuesday. At the same time, that will give anybody an opportunity that felt they didn't get proper notice of the meeting to speak up.
I think it's a good idea. I agree. I personally, my vote would be not to go to December. That's too far away. I think we should take the hearing until now.
And we need forty-eight hours, right?
I mean, my only comment is, I mean, if he's in operational, if he's operating the window now under that catering permit that he had, why not let him continue to operate? Because that was the whole question, whether that covered him or not, the pre-existing use. So why don't we allow him to continue to operate in one week from now? We can take it up and, you know, I think in fairness to the applicant, you know.
It's not his fault that there was a computer glitch. So I totally agree with Dave. Like, let's, but let's continue, let's continue to get down the road tonight as far as the open discussion so that I think, you know, maybe it gives Mr. Henry a little bit more comfort knowing, you know, where everybody stands, what, how everybody feels. And then we continue the hearing to meet the, quote, the needs of the hearing, to meet all the requirements. And then, you know, we continue, we have, hopefully, it's a quick meeting next Tuesday night, and we can decide it and be done with it.
Yeah, I mean, the argument is a catering window is, does the catering, does it fall under the same provision as catering? I mean, catering, someone can go pick up catering as well as it can be delivered. So, so I think for now, we allow the applicant to operate, operate his business while we wait.
All right, Dave, Dave McColl, you're gonna hang on to that thought for a second? This is not to the deliberation yet. You have to go through too much steps for us.
So I had made a motion, I had made a motion to continue this one week.
Can we hold off on the motion and take the hearing a little bit further?
What was that? Can we make, Dave, can we make the motion at the end of the, at the end of the hearing so that?
That's fine.
Because if we make a motion now, then we go into continuation, and we don't have an opportunity to discuss tonight.
Okay, all right, then I will withdraw that motion for the time being, and I'll make a different motion. I'll make a motion that we allow the use of, under the, I'm gonna pull it up the right thing.
But David, we're not even at the point where we can make a motion yet. We haven't deliberated.
Well, how can we deliberate if I don't make a motion?
Because we.
We'll deliberate.
Yeah, but aren't we supposed to hear public comment first?
Yeah, some public comment first.
Yeah, so I thought you already asked for that.
I didn't do it yet. No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Dave, you're jumping way ahead.
I'm sorry. I get up at three o'clock this morning to go to work. I'm sorry.
All right, so.
The floor is yours, Jocelyn.
Currently, we have heard the case from the petitioner, and the board is asking questions of the petitioner. And I'd like to ask if there's anyone here present who would like to speak in opposition to the application? And no, no one has responded to speaking in opposition. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application?
I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Would you please state your name?
In case you don't recognize the voice.
Recognize you.
All right, no, I actually here, I'm here at this meeting as, as the neighbor to this property and not as the building inspector. I want to make that clear. And I have, as the neighbor, I have absolutely no objection to the continued use of the takeout window.
Okay. And your name for the record is Mr.? And what is your property address?
Number seven, Spring.
Seven Springs, Steve. Okay, thank you. Is anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of the application?
I would.
Hey, ma'am, could you state your name and address, please?
Anne Wachtel, sixteen forty steps lane.
Okay, Anne Wachtel, W A C H T L, sixteen forty steps lane?
You got it.
Okay.
I just think that particularly now, this business is so helpful to so many people in this town. There are many people who go out still to restaurants, but there are many of us who don't go near anything. And Brett Henry's opening has been a savior for so many people in this position. I think it would be crazy to not let him to continue.
Hi, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yeah, I would like to speak. This is Stephen Viviano, the property owner.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, board. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chairwoman. I'd like to speak just briefly on Brett. Brett, I can assure you spoke the truth. I had a lawyer draw up a pretty lengthy lease for him that stipulated a catering window, catering business. I had a lawyer draw up a pretty lengthy lease for him that stipulated a catering window, catering business there exclusively. Um, Brett was, uh, on the fence almost up until he opened on what exactly he was gonna do. It seemed like he wasn't quite sure, but I could tell you, uh, like the rest of the world, he was getting pretty nervous with his bills and, um, with the work he had done there, and with the future of his business. Uh, I told Brett that, um, you know, as a member of the town, and as the landlord, you know, anything he wanted to do, just, you know, make sure you do it in accordance with the town and in the neighborhood, and so on and so forth. Um, Brett has plunged forward, he has been a, a great tenant. He really has gone out of his way, he's, you know, one of my big things was have appreciation and respect for the neighborhood over there. Uh, he's excellent with the, he has dumpster empty twice a week. He handles all his cleaning products and stuff, as you know, that, that house, the business is pretty tight to the house next door. Um, he's, he's, he's been extremely, extremely, uh, wonderful with it. And also, um, with the, with the parking, I have approached the neighborhood businesses just to make sure that my involvement, um, with that building, no one's irritated with it. And, uh, when Brett first opened, he had an overwhelming response to business, as you'd expect. Um, the cars really didn't know what to do. Brett actually, uh, I think he had his son was out there directing traffic, making sure seaside variety wasn't blocked, making sure, um, you know, everyone was just playing by the rules. And, um, can't speak for the owner of Seaside Variety, but he told me that he was very happy with how everything transitioned, and that, uh, if anything, he was picking up some business from it. Um, I think it's great, I, I, you know, I love to see business in town, I, I think that little area is kind of all we have, and, uh, I do my part to try to make sure it can survive and strive, and good people go in there, you know, with, with businesses, that'll be good for the town. And, um, though it wasn't the plan, uh, I, I will definitely go on the record saying that, I, I think it's been a wonderful addition. And, uh, Brett has my full blessing, and I will supply Brett, uh, quickly, um, for, for whatever reason, when you go on any permit application, when you select the property, the parcel, it auto-populates in the parcel ID and, and all that stuff. One forty-three and one forty-five, I don't understand how, but they are looked at as one piece of property in the hot. I, uh, am embarrassed to say this, I probably should know, but I don't know how they base the taxes. I would think they would base the taxes based upon commercial and residential space, and nowhere in the town record do they have those two, uh, selected separately. Now, if any of us went on and selected our home, you know, a single-family residence, it would auto-populate the square footage. Brett's building, for whatever reason, doesn't even allow him to select the right address, as you guys see before you tonight. He's actually got a special permit in, uh, and the address on it is one forty-five Nahat Road, which is actually a single-family house. So hopefully the glitch in the system can be fixed, and, uh, the square footage issue will be fixed. But I will supply, as I have, the plot plan, um, for the property hasn't changed. The driveway did take a new shape, I did actually put definitive grass and crushed stone, but, uh, as Brett said, the driveway is three cars wide, and, um, two cars deep, and the, the woman who lives there only occupies one space, so Brett really has the rest of them. Um, but he utilizes four of them at a maximum at a time, and gives the woman, uh, her spot, and then a spot for a guest, uh, so she has one. And, um, yeah, I think, I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the application? That being a no, then, okay, we're gonna move to deliberation, and, um, start discussing the application. And, um, in the event that we do decide to continue this matter, I guess we're gonna have to reopen, uh, that, and take any further comments that may come at the next meeting. Um, so, what does everybody think?
Um, I wanna, I, I mean, I know you addressed the, the zoning board letter, and I also want to address it. Um, you know, looking at the plot plan, it's got a stamp, um, from a land surveyor. Yes, it's twenty years old, but I think if I went and grabbed my, um, plot plan, it would probably be either that old or older. So I don't know that that makes much of a difference. I, I hate to say it, but I think the planning board, um, letter to me seems pretty nitpicky. Um, especially in this time of COVID, as, uh, Mr. Henry said, he's trying to keep his business afloat. He just sunk all this money in, he didn't know COVID was gonna happen, he wanted to continue. I, I will say this, over the many, many years I've lived in this town, and the many, many years that I volunteered at different events and functions, uh, Brett Henry and Mount Vernon Restaurant, I think Mount Vernon Catering at the time, or whatever, was always right there to help this community. And his intent was to open a catering business, and then COVID hit, and this was one way for him to, like, keep his business afloat. And, um, I, as far as the traffic goes, um, I, I think, uh, Dave said it earlier, there's no difference in, in traffic. Um, that used to be, many, many years ago, there was a, a Chilean, uh, takeout restaurant. Um, there was never a traffic problem, the pizza place doesn't have a traffic problem. The, um, I, I recall vaguely the fish store, uh, there were two parking spaces with the fish store. Um, you know, there, there wasn't a parking problem with the fish store. It, it may seem like there is a little bit more congestion, and I think a lot of it has to do with the parking lot, uh, for, uh, seaside variety. But if, you know, there's four parking spaces in front of, um, in front of that, those two buildings, the, the residents and, and, um, the catering. There's four parking spots, maybe three if they're pickup trucks, but to me, it's you go in, you pick up your food, and you go on your way. Um, other, you know, uh, other restaurants are dealing with COVID, and they are doing pickup at the door. Um, some of them haven't opened, um, unallowing seating. If you go into Lynn, I think Lynn is a red zone right now, there, a lot of places are doing pickup, and I just, I think that this is, um, you know, uh, I, I think for, while COVID is happening, obviously, Mr. Henry wants to get back into doing catering, and not have to work seven days a week killing himself, but, you know, um, I, I don't see a problem with any of the issues here. I know that in the hot, we probably don't want takeout windows, um, but this is a special circumstance.
Anybody else want to have any comment? Max, are you still with us? Um.
Yes.
David, David, anybody else have any comment or deliberation?
No, I will concur with, uh, Mr. Barber's comments.
I will, I will as well.
Yep.
Now, can we, uh, Jocelyn, can we make motions tonight? Or do we have to hold off on motions till a continued date?
It might be a good idea if we, imagine we can make some tonight, but yes, we're gonna have to make one to continue. Um, and I would suggest that, um, anything else that involved, you know, we could probably do best if we held off any motions until our next date. And then we can wrap things up on that date.
I mean, the, the other benefit to it is that a lot.
Last one question? Uh, Brad, are you planning to do this long-term, or are you just looking for, for the, you know, through the pandemic?
Well, my, my original goal, like I said, was to do it just, um, you know, open catering. And then, so, I mean, no, if catering takes off again in a year or so from now, I don't, I don't have any interest in working seven days a week and doing this for the whole rest of my life out there, you know? It's just kind of a, you know, temporary means to an end, but, you know, I added breakfast on, a couple of things on, I don't know if I'm gonna keep that going or not, I'm just trying a couple of different things to see what people like, and kind of play in the field a little bit, you know? But my, my intentions were to open the window seven days a week, and work, you know, a hundred and twenty hours a week doing this, so, you know, I'm just playing it by hand, see what happens. Who knows when it's gonna come back to normal, you know, if, if it ever comes back to normal at the point now, you know? So, I mean, my other question too, would it change the dynamic if I open the door and let people walk in and pick up their food? As opposed to a takeout window? What's the difference on that? You know, I'm just, I'm trying to keep it as COVID-friendly and compliant as possible by doing the window. I could have people walk in the front door if I wanted to and pick up their food.
I agree.
I'm not sure there'd be any difference.
All right, um, the basis on.
My, uh, my last comment was, this will also give us, I mean, so, just, just so Mr. Henry's clear, that we, we need a, something, uh, an application that has the square footage filled out on it, correct?
Right.
Just need some kind of plan in part that shows the parking and the square footage in series of building.
Okay.
Send it over to Cam, and she'll send it to us.
All right, because that, that, hopefully you get that within a week, and then we have everything we need for, for, you know, next week.
I just want to be clear that our, our rules and regulations do not require an architectural plan for a use application. I've read them through several times, they do not seem to require that for a use application. They don't require a certified plot plan for a use application, unless I'm wrong about that, but I think.
So then we shouldn't need these things.
But we need, so we recall, we, we can ask for any plan, we want to, but we need, we need to have some proof that he's under the one thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
Some kind of parking for his employees, that's what we're looking for.
All right.
Um, something to hang our head on.
Jocelyn, what, what do you think about just approving it now with a, with like a sunset clause? So, for a year, says it has to come back, and we look at it in a year? Do you still have a concern with the, with the notice issue?
I, I do have a big problem with the notice issue because of the fact that Robert, the webmaster, did email back saying, had posted it properly, it was just a temporary glitch. But Dan Script wrote and said that, you know, his county council wrote and responded and said, it would be better off continuing the matter for a week, so that we don't risk any objection, uh, turning this into a appeal.
Well, I mean, there still could be objections, but that, but.
For Mr. Henry.
Yeah, there, there still could be objections, but that would be, uh, we'd be opening the door for an objection.
Exactly, and, and why bother all this trouble and do that? Let you do that.
If we do it as a sunset clause, we still would have just as much vulnerability to a, to an appeal, I guess, right?
Right.
It's just frustrating, this is like the second time that this has happened, that we just, and, and who pointed it out? The town clerk pointed it out? Isn't that the person who posted? Who fixed it?
Yeah. The way I understand it is Diane Dunphy, the clerk, posted it to the website. Now, I used to post them when Peggy was the clerk, but now, um, Diane Dunphy, she does the posting. So I give her the notice, and she stamps it, and she sends it to the webmaster. Um, and he said in his email that at some point between then and today, something happened with his hosting changed, and therefore it was, wasn't available to people. And it must be available forty-eight hours before the hearing, and kind of according to the law. So, we have to be careful, we don't know for sure if it was or wasn't, and so that's why Dan Script suggested we just continue the matter, and, you know, we can schedule a hearing, just via Zoom, it should be pretty quick. I mean, our case in the afternoon, five o'clock, any day in the next week.
All right, um, hearing all that, and hearing that there, you know, as of right now, there is no opposition, and people, there are people who spoke in favor, I'll move that we continue this meeting to Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, is that correct?
Yep.
At five, at five P M.
Right. I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, the only discussion would be, the only discussion would be that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Henry, uh, provide us with the, uh, the plans showing the square footage and the parking for the employees. Now, that's admitted to us before.
And I don't even know that the parking is that important.
I'm not sure it is either, but.
The fish store had only two parking spaces. I think the, um, it actually, Mr. Viviano's on, um, I think he's the landlord for those, uh, for some of those other businesses. How much parking that does each one of those businesses have?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, show, show us what we have, we don't, we're not requiring things right now, we're just asking.
Right.
So.
The sketch, it seems to be that had to show us where the parking is, then we can record of it. Um, so if there's no discussion on the motion, I'm gonna say, um, all in favor, if you give me a roll call.
Yeah, Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Aye.
And who are you?
Dustin Campbell, aye. Okay, so that concludes our hearing for this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Campbell, aye. Thanks, everybody, see you next Tuesday.
Thank you, we'll see you next week.
All right, take care.
Okay.
Bye-bye.